I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 18th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there's any input from the audience on items that are not on the agenda, they may come to the podium at this time stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the audience input section. Next on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the November 28th, 2023 regular meeting and the resignation of Commissioner Powell. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have no old business this evening, so we will move on to our public hearing section. We have a busy public hearing section this evening. The first up is a renewal of the Vestera LLC and StoneX LLC small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, and I will turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just get this pulled up quick. Okay, so this is for the renewal of the small-scale mineral extraction permit for Vestera and StoneX. This site is located on the south side of Bonner Path, about a quarter mile west of Blaine Avenue. You can see here for some perspective, County Road 42 is to the south, Akron Avenue would be west of this site, and then further east is Highway 52. So it's in this area of land here, which is owned by Flint Hills Resources, Flint Hills Resources, to which the applicant has a lease. There are three operators at the site, Bolander, Solberg, and Fratalone. This past year, in 2023, there was just under 25,000 cubic yards of minerals removed from the site. 20,000 of that came from Bolander, under 5,000 was taken out by Solberg, and Fratalone had none removed from its section of the site. This is a significant reduction from the 120, between 120 and 140,000 cubic yards that were removed in 2022. So you can see the site layout here with the 2024 mine plan. The three operators, Solberg, operating in the northwest corner of the site, Bolander just south of that, and then Fratalone has a standalone southern portion of the site here. A total of nine acres have been reclaimed, as shown in the yellow hatched areas, and then I will have some aerials to show a little clearer what is going on on the site. So in September of 2022, this was the existing conditions. You can see the mine pit wall on the west with area here that was scraped in anticipation of mining. Trucks enter the site from Bonner Path, and just a few years ago, the haul route was updated, so they exit the site from driveway to the east to Blaine Avenue. So you can see this northern portion where Solberg is mining, Bolander is in the central portion, and Fratalone was doing some work here down in the south. And the grassy areas within here are the reclaimed portions that have been reclaimed with topsoil and seeded. So this was September of 2022. You can see the main difference being some additional mineral extraction occurring in the southwest corner, for the most part, a little bit occurring to the north. So 2022, 2023. As part of the annual review, staff does visit all of the mineral extraction operations and take some photographs. Here you can see the coming into the mine area just before you in the foreground is some reclaimed land with the mine wall in the distance with some, just some stockpile in there. Here is another view of the site, showing some truck activity in there. And then lastly, as you're heading kind of through the site to the southeast. So with that, staff is recommending a motion to approve, to recommend approval of the mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the conditions contained in the attached permit. So staff is happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present to answer any questions staff is not able to.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any comments or questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we will open up the public hearing for this item. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item, they may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any last follow-up comments before we move into a motion for this renewal?
Just this comment, just because it's going by really quickly. They've been in front of us a number of times, several years, and continue to be a good partner for the city, and no real changes to the operation and issues being, coming up, so I'm in favor of this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, you want to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to recommend City Council approve renewal of the Vestera LLC and StoneX LLC small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached 2024 conditions for mineral extraction.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our public hearing section this evening is a renewal of the Schaefer Contracting Company Incorporated small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024. Anthony, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, so this mineral extraction operation is located in the more northern portion of the site. It is a quarter mile west of Rich Valley Boulevard and about a mile north of Blaine Avenue. So for reference, down here is where the previous mining operation is located, Akron Avenue, kind of on the west side of it, and then 52 further east. So this is a piece of property that is kind of encircled by land owned by Flint Hills Resources. In 2023, the applicant reported 1,698 cubic yards of material removed from the site. That is a reduction from the 53,000 that was removed last year. The applicant also reported 15,000 cubic yards of haulback material brought in. That is less than the 32,000 that was brought in last year. So just a reduction in activity overall. The applicant did submit their annual testing to ensure that the haulback meets the 95% compaction as required by their, their permit. So the current operations, you can see here, the blue is where the active mining is occurring. It's on the western portion of the site, generally mostly all in Phase 5 with a little bit in Phase 4, and I'll show you in the aerials coming up here. Haulback is brought into a central portion of the site. There's some existing stockpiles located within there, and then areas where the land has been reclaimed. And then going forward, the applicant is anticipating basically similar, similar year ahead to the one that just passed with mineral extraction, again, occurring in that northwestern portion of the site for the most part. So here was the 2022, you can see the green areas here being the reclaimed portion of the site, those stockpiles I mentioned, and then most of the, the active mining. Haulback is, is being placed in this central portion of the site. So from 22 to 23, you can see there hasn't been a whole lot changed. I'm just going to go back and forth once more. See some activity up here, some of that haulback brought in here, and then those reclaimed areas to the north. So the, some pictures staff took while we were out there, on the right-hand side of this photo is where that haulback is being located. The active mining is off in the distance there, and then to the right is some of that reclaimed land. This is another view from closer to the entrance of the site, that reclaimed portion on the right-hand side, there's just a little bit of that min, uh, stockpile shown there, and then on the left as well. And then just another visual showing that haulback area and then some of that reclaimed land that is on, along the northern portion of the site there. I didn't mention this with the last report, but staff did ask the police department for any reports of complaints received in 2023. None were received by the police department for the prior mineral extraction operation and nor the Schaefer one before you right now. So staff is, again, recommending approval of their renewal of their permit for 2024, subject to the conditions in their mineral extraction permit. Staff is happy to take any questions, otherwise applicant is here who can speak on that as well.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any comments or questions on this mineral extraction permit? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Anthony, what, can you just explain what the compaction requirement is? What, just kind of in, you know?
Right.
Pretend I'm an eighth grader.
Yeah.
Learning about compaction thresholds, what does that mean?
Yeah, it basically means it needs to be tamped down so that it can be used in the future and not be unstable. So they do their testing to make sure that it's been compacted, so that it's not just kind of loose dirt, so that theoretically it could be redeveloped or built on or something in the future, but that's really the, the point there, rather than just kind of dumping it on the site.
And so 95% would mean like, the material is brought in, it's at 100, and then you could compact it, but you could only compact it down to like 95% of what it was?
It's to ensure that it gets compacted up to at least 95%.
Okay.
Is my understanding. Where 100 would be like 100% compacted.
100% compact, like what, what would that look?
I, I, I don't think I'm ready to speak to the specifics on the compaction testing.
Okay.
Certainly, the, the testing was provided with the attachments, so.
Got it. No, I understand it's met the requirement. I'm more just trying to visualize and, and figure out what does that, what does that look like, what does that mean, you know? But that's fine.
Any other comments or questions? At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for the Schaefer public, for the Schaefer renewal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Any other final comments before we move forward?
Who was that seconded by?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was seconded by Commissioner Reed. Thank you, Alicia. Similar to the previous one, I will just kind of echo Commissioner Reed's comments. They have been mining, you know, with us for five, six years now, and this is consistent with previous years, so. Actually, longer than that. I think that we had no activity in the last five years. It's been longer, I think, like 20 years that we've been having them, so. So with that, I will make a motion to recommend City Council renew the Schaefer Contracting Company small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions in the attached draft 2024 conditions for mineral extraction.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Tiergarden. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And this item, as well as the previous item and all items on tonight's agenda, will move forward to City Council on January 16th, 2024. The next item on our agenda this evening is a renewal of the Dakota Aggregates large-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024. Anthony, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is the request by Dakota Aggregates for renewal of their large-scale mineral extraction permit. They are currently operating on land leased from the University of Minnesota within the, its U-More Park boundaries. It's located in the western portion of U-More Park, bounded to the north by County Road 42, Biscayne Avenue on the west, and County Road 46 to the south. It contains, the actual mineral extraction area, the lease contains some ancillary uses, the, a wall plant, hard, formerly known as hard drives. There is an asphalt factory in the southeast corner of the site. Those are all renewed separately from the actual mineral extraction permit for the site. The site itself is broken up into two portions of mining. The northern portion, which will eventually be bisected by extension of Boulder Trail when that gets constructed. The northern mining area is leased through 2028, and the applicant is running generally ahead of schedule and hoping to get as far away from the development occurring there as possible, as quickly as possible. The southern mine area is a combination of dry and wet mining. The wet mining being the, Dakota Aggregates operates a dredge barge that kind of floats out there in that man-made area and scoops up materials from the, from the bottom and moves those into their stockpile for selling offsite. So 87 acres of the site have now been turned over to, back to the university. They've been reclaimed with topsoil and turned back over to the university, which is using it generally for agricultural purposes there. Before you, you can see the totals of aggregate removed and stockpiles onsite. The biggest thing to note is that the stockpiles are down and materials removed and sold are up from the previous year. You can see just based on the volume there, significantly higher than the other small-scale mineral extraction operations here in the city. So the applicant has divided up the mining on the site into several different phases. The northern portion has 10 or 11 phases. Each one is broken up into sub-phases within it. The southern portion with that kind of speckled color there are the phases of the south mining area, this combination of dry and wet mining in there. So the applicant, and I'll go into this a little bit detail further, had started with one and two, and then moved down into this three and four area. They're moving to the east here, and then will eventually start into 11 in order to just get this area done as quickly as possible, since it is closest to Amberfields Development that's occurring there. But at this time, the applicant is not anticipating going into 11 in 2024. So a side-by-side showing fall of 2022 on the left and fall of 2023 on the right, you can see this darker dirt area is basically what has been reclaimed this year and turned back over to the university. You can also see that the actual mine pit is moving to the east along this boundary, which is shown here. There is a sand stockpile that is slowly getting decreased in size and shipped to the south here. And then this land here has been stripped, and the applicant is anticipating finishing up mining here and then moving to the east to take care of that as well in the 2024 year. So the mine plan provided by the applicant, I don't know if you can really see it super clear, maybe it's just my angle, but most of the mining will be occurring in Phase 4 and then moving to the east into Phase 3A, sub-phase 3A and sub-phase 3B. Those ones are those areas that were stripped, shown in that previous aerial. This is, sub-phase 2D is still an open area, but the, the active mining will be kind of moving to the east here. In the south portion of the site, you can see that the, the lake that's being created is slowly moving westward, which is in line with the plans provided by the applicant over the past couple of years, as far as how things will progress. There's also some dry mining occurring in this northern portion in section, or Phase 10. You can see this wall of the pit is kind of, remains somewhat the same, but the biggest change being the, the westward movement of that lake. The dredge itself is, just floats out there and is connected to the conveyor and swings kind of east and west as needed. So again, this is the plan for 2024 that the applicant has provided. You can see the active mining occurring in this open water area up here, and as I said, the applicant is also mining sub-phase 10 up here in the north as well. So staff did, as I said, reach out to the police department about any calls or complaints in this area. Four calls were received in May and June of 2023, all from kind of the one, or County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue area. Two of them, the police officers didn't provide any notes. The other two calls, the, a police officer said that they didn't really hear a lot of noise. Certainly, it wasn't louder than traffic on 42, although at that time of night, there wasn't a ton of traffic, but it's basically consistent to what we've been hearing in the past. And staff does encourage residents that do have concerns or complaints about the noise to call the 911, which is also a non-emergency number here in Rosemont, so that we can at least have record of these calls to, to identify any issues as they arise. So that being said, it's a pretty consistent request by the applicant, and going forward, it, it continues to move in the same direction that staff has anticipated it to go, and therefore is recommending approval of their renewal for 2024.
Thank you, Anthony. Just wanted to clarify on your comment about having the residents call 911.
Yep.
It's not only to have it on record, but if, if there was a noise issue, I know we've worked with Dakota Aggregates in the past, and they've been great partners at trying to figure out what's going on or how to reduce it, or if something was happening, right?
Certainly, certainly, they want to know as well.
So it does get reported back to them as well if there's a complaint? Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just, well, it will also go on the record, it, it is something that could be addressed by them.
Yeah.
If there is something that can be done. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted, it may be for the applicant, Anthony, but, you know, it's kind of the same thing that came up last year at this time. It's, it's great to see, you know, the movement south and the noise issues have been reduced, and they've been a great partner. There's still, as you pointed out, some activity in Zone 3, some, some, a pile of sand or something that they're drawing from, and then they'll be moving into Phase 11. What, do you know, like, timing-wise, timing-wise and distance-wise, how do we see that interplaying with Amberfields?
So I would, I would defer to the applicant on how, how long or how quickly they see things progressing going forward. Obviously, it all depends on the type of jobs that are coming through and things like that. But certainly, the developer of Amberfields and, and people moving into Amberfields, it's an active mine, so there isn't a whole lot of resolutions to be had there, except for getting the mining done as quickly as possible. But I would defer to the applicant on that one.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will open up the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak may do so, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And we will invite, if the applicant wants to come forward and address Commissioner Reed's question, that would be great as well.
My name is Ruth Simon. I live on Bloomfield Path. I have one question about noise.
Ruth, can I, right, before you do that, I just need, we need your address for the record.
14642 Bloomfield Path.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question about noise, not from vehicles, but from machinery running all night. Are there any restrictions on that?
Okay, so what I've done is I've noted your question down, and then at the end of the public hearing, we will have staff and the applicant address all questions.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience would like to speak at this time? Is there someone from the applicant that can address Commissioner Reed's questions?
My name is Matt Metling, 423 Ramsey Corp. Carver, Operations Manager for Dakota Aggregates. I can address either one first. You're talking about the eastern side there or northeastern side of our north mine there?
Yes.
Along the new development there?
Yep.
So we have about six or seven phases there on the north mine we have to get out of by 20, end of 2028. Phase 11B is not included in that. We do need to get over our north mine in those timeframes. We are on schedule to get out there by the end of 2028.
That'd be, that'd be through, that's like phase, I mean, sorry, Zone 3 or Phase 3? You'd be out of there by 2028?
Yes.
But then Zone, or Phase 11, what is the timing for that?
Currently, right now, we do not have an actual timeframe to be out of Phase 11. That is on our entire permit, for a year permit there, so.
Do you know, like, the distance from the, the board, the eastern border of Phase 11, what the distance is to, to the homes to be built there in Amberfields?
Um, so our, basically our edge of Phase 11 there, you can see, oh yeah, it kind of cuts off there, but we'll basically have a berm, and then we'll have an access road, and then it'll be our mine phase. So you're looking at about, say, 60, 60 feet or something like that, 50 feet, so.
Is it, and now there's a 30-foot berm requirement in other areas, is that the same requirement here to be now?
No, there's, that would be for a super berm, those large berms that are really tall. This would just be a normal MSHA berm. We have been working with U of M, and U of M's working with the developer, Bel Air there, on trying to get that fence put in since day one, and it sounds like they're getting a little more ground, and the developer is going to put a fence in, so.
But the fence is more of a security issue than, than a noise abatement, right?
Yes, that is security and a separation to keep the public out of the mine, so.
Okay.
I was just going to say, so what Commissioner Reed is kind of getting at is the noise with, I mean, the current mine to the houses, we've got, I think, 1,000 feet or something.
Yep.
Distance, and we've got the big berm and all of that. These people obviously are buying these houses knowing that it's here, but that's not necessarily going to matter two, three years after they're in their house.
True.
So we're just trying to gauge like how, like, I don't know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'm trying to gauge what, how long that is going to be as that development develops.
Yeah, I mean, we'll definitely work our way towards Phase 11. We've kind of redirected on where we're mining a few times, you know, around housing and everything that for the city. So we'll definitely redirect when we get to that timeframe to try to mine that area first, but we do have to mine it in a sequence that makes sense and makes it basically feasible for us to mine too. We can't just jump straight into that mine phase because we have a plant that's set up a little further away. We've got to basically mine our way to it, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, also related to the noise, I mean, we do not do any crushing in our north mine. We don't even do any screening there. All it is, is a loader hitting a face of a stockpile or basically a face of the mine, and it's all conveyed up. So there's not haul trucks running back and forth, it's just a conveyor running, transporting material.
And does that run 24 hours?
We are permitted 24 hours a day, seven days a week up there, yes.
Okay, and is that common to, I mean, are you typically running it 24 hours right now?
Currently, our north mine, an average running at 12 hours a day. It's mostly during the daylight hours. Last year, we did run a handful of nights though, so it is more on the day right now, but we are permitted the 24/7 there.
Okay, and so I, I'm not sure, I mean, so it would only be the conveyor noise really that?
Yeah, even our loaders, we take off the backup beepers that make that beep sound. By law, we have to have some kind of a noise on them, but it's, we call it a squawker. It is a very like low, low sound, so basically for safety for any workers around the area. So you really don't hear it like you hear like at an industrial park with the beeper, so.
Okay. And when you were running 24 hours, you don't run, I mean, it was with projects, right? Like ebbs and flows with projects or with the mining? Like ebbs and flows with projects or with the mining, or how does it?
Up to about two years ago, we were running 24 hours a day up at the north mine.
Okay.
So about five days a week on average, so.
Okay. So you were running quite consistently?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With the floating dredge, we have been able to focus more down towards the dredge. But we do still run the the north mine, at least 12 hours a day, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on this item? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, so Anthony, help me understand. So the way the the permits work, I'm just trying to think ahead. It seems like there could be a problem, a noise problem down the road, especially if they're 24 hours. They're not going to get to that eastern section until probably the time that Amberfield is building in that area, right? So what do you foresee us, the city, doing at that point? Would we, would we change the hours of operations? So it'd be in that section because it's close to the area? If there were a noise problem, we'd cut it down to daylight hours, or how would we?
Yeah, so there's a few different options for mitigation. The the northern mining operation that's currently occurring, as we said earlier, they stopped hauling, you know, they changed their haul route. They limited to how they could do the, when they could haul up there. As the applicant said, they've taken some of the, changed the noise that occurs with the backups and things like that, placing the equipment below grade so that the noise doesn't travel as far. So it's a matter of kind of implementing some mitigation steps for those, you know, if if problems do arise, yeah. So there is a, there is an opportunity to, you know, impose some requirements to.
Depending on the nature of the problem.
Yeah.
There's a lot of operational mitigation steps. As a city, we could say, limit the hours somewhat if this is not 24-hour noise, right?
Yeah, right. Yep. Yeah, I think it's more of a, if if problems arise, having a meaningful conversation with the applicant on what best ways to mitigate those problems.
Okay. Have we considered a super berm? I guess the term used, I mean, it sounds like there's different types of berms and.
Right.
Would that be another option, maybe? A higher berm if we needed it there?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, it would be a conversation to be had, making sure that, you know, it's meaningful and worthwhile, given, you know, what's, what, like, a big berm like that is is not nothing. It's pretty significant. And not just for the applicant, but it does take up a lot of land.
Got it.
But certainly, there are options. And I don't know if you were on the Commission when we did noise monitoring and things like that as well. And so from a staff standpoint, it seems like things are moving in the right direction. And if they kind of continue operating in the way that they're conveying the material to the south rather than trying to haul it out, would help limit a lot of the impacts.
Got it. Yeah, and they've been a great partner, and they were with the noise situation. And I expect the same thing here. And it sounds like we've got some options, so I'm comfortable. Thank you.
The reality is, they they have a lease through 2040 for the for the southern portion of the site, and so they're going to be there for a while. But just getting rid of that northern mine, you know, I think that will go a long way towards that. And they're a quick mover, and if there's some big projects, just getting the mining to occur in those areas that would be most potentially impactful on the development, getting that done and out of the way would would probably go a lot further than any of the other mitigation steps that could be imposed.
Are there any other comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, Anthony, so at the, currently, there are no noise concerns that rise to a level of staff recommending any kind of imposition of noise, further noise restrictions, if any, in the permit?
Right, right. They're already doing some of the things that we had asked them to do, making sure their stuff is below grade, like I said, and change the the backup chime and things like that. So the level of complaints that are being received are are not nothing, but compared to what they were, significantly reduced.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to recommend that the City Council renew the Dakota Aggregates' large-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions and the attached 2024 draft conditions for middle extraction, mineral extraction permit.
Second.
It is my move by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We will move on to the next public hearing item of this evening. This is the renewal of the Carl Bolander and Sons LLC small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024. And I will turn it over to Alicia.
I am presenting the application for a small-scale mineral extraction permit renewal for Carl Bolander and Sons for 2024. Just a summary, the Planning Commission has asked to consider their renewal application for the year 2024. Just some updates business-wise for 2023. The company has been mining below restoration grade in parts of Phase 3 and 4. Phases 1 and 2 is completely done being mined and is fully restored. Oops. In 2023, 13,000 cubic yards of material were removed from the site, and 23,450 cubic yards were brought into the site. Both are a significant decrease compared to the year 2022. As I was talking to the applicant, it's kind of cyclical, depending on projects. And in spring of 2023, they had their lowest backlog in over five years. But however, in 2024, they anticipate to utilize 75,000 to 150,000 cubic yards of sand in 2024. Here is their site location. So they're directly south of County Road 42 and about one and a half miles east of Highway 52 that way. Adjacently west to them is Danner and Steiner locations. Here are some aerial imagery of the site. Here's September 2022 and August 2023. As you can see, there's not a lot that changed. As you can see, Phase 1 and 2 over here on the west are starting to grow more vegetation. The restoration impacts are starting to be more visible, and they're slowly moving eastward. Here is it close up. In mid-November, we visited the mineral extraction sites. So here are some photos. So this is more as you get into the site down here, where you can see vegetation has been planted. Things are starting to grow in the restored part. Here's the site. And then here is their phasing plan. So Phase 1 and 2 again are fully restored. Parts of Phase 3 are restored. The parts in the red hatching are where they plan to, like, expand and continue mining. So as you can see, it goes, again, more eastward. And the recommended action is a motion to recommend the City Council approve the Bolander and Sons mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions and the attached 2024 draft conditions.
Thank you, Alicia. Are there any comments or questions from the Commission? Commissioner Whitman?
So, so I, this, this has a nice exhibit here on the compaction testing. I'm still thinking about, thinking about how that works. But do you have any, do you have an understanding of how that compaction and the percentage?
I did a little bit of research, but almost deferred to the applicant.
Okay.
They have a TerraCon representative, too, listed in their compaction testing. The testing they use, it was like an ASMD 6938. And basically, what it records is like water density and then compaction, so water levels, how dense the soil is and how compact it is for construction as well as research and development.
Okay. And so, and I guess, I'll ask the question, but I'll probably get the, I'm just going to make a fool of myself by asking it. But so it's like a wet, the soil's brought in, it has a certain amount of moisture, wet, you know, soil. That's compacted down. The moisture comes out, and it's a dry density. And that difference computes to the percentage of compaction somehow?
Yeah, I guess, like, recall from my college soil classes. Thank you, soil science. The more dry a soil is, the more it's prone to sedimentation and erosion, traveling via like wind. And so the more wet it is, the more compact it'll be able to stay, stay in place. The higher water content, meaning potentially more organic matter, so.
Okay.
Your college professor will be proud.
Yeah. I'm impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the applicant might be able to.
Yeah, that's great.
Explain a little bit, too. Any other comments or questions for Alicia before we open the public hearing? Thank you. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience would like to speak may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And I would invite the applicant to come forward if he would like to speak on compaction. No? Okay. He's going to talk to you afterwards. Does that work?
That's fine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Seeing that, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Jumping ahead, I apologize. Any final comments or questions for this item before us? Seeing that, I will make a motion to recommend the City Council approve renewal of the Carl Bolander and Sons LLC small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the conditions in the attached 2024 conditions for mineral extraction. Who is that? Is that you? So moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have one more mineral extraction permit this evening. We have a renewal of the Max Steiner Inc. small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, and I will turn this over to Julia.
Right. All right. So this is another small-scale mineral extraction permit renewal for Max Steiner. So a little bit of a summary of the request. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a request to renew the small-scale mineral extraction for 2024. So a little bit of a mining update. About 51,000 tons of material was extracted in 2023. That is up from 2022. Total, to date, about 185,800 tons of material have been removed since the mine's opening. About 50,000 tons is projected to be removed in 2024 as well. And then the applicant does anticipate an additional 1.25 acres to be mined within Phase 1 of 2024, and then also an additional one acre to be stripped in 2024 as well. So a little bit of aerial view right here. So the total acreage of the site is 78 acres. It's located about a mile east of US Highway 52 and south of County Road 42. It is located directly west of that Danner-Bolander area over. You can see in this aerial as well. And then here's a couple aerials from May 2022 to April 2023. You can see in this May 2022 one, they are continuing south in that Phase 1, which is where they've been mining for the last couple of years. And then you can see in April 2023, they are continuing south in that Phase 1 as well. So here are the current conditions shown. So you can see on site that they do have that berm in place that was completed in 2020. And then also, they're going to be continuing south into Phase 1. Phase 1 does consist of about 15 acres, and they are planning to continue south on that area as well. And then here is also the mining plan, kind of like what I said. And as you saw in the aerial, they are continuing south in that Phase 1. They do approximately about 3.9 acres within that northern portion they are mining in as well in that area. And then, like stated earlier, staff did go out to all the mine sites to look over the course of the year what has changed. And then looking at this one, the left photo, you're looking west onto the site. This top right one, you're looking south on the site. And then this bottom one, you're looking west as well on the site. And then this one, on the left-hand side, you are looking northeast on the site and then also southwest on the site as well. So recommended action, motion to recommend renewal of Max Steiner Inc.'s small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions attached in the draft 2024 conditions for mineral extraction. And then I will take questions if the Commission has any.
Thank you, Julia. Are there any comments or questions for Julia at this time? This is a public hearing item. So at this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience would like to speak may do so at this time. Coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions on this item before we move forward? I will make an recommended, I will make a motion to recommend renewal of Max Steiner Inc.'s small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2024, subject to the terms and conditions and the attached draft 2024 conditions for mineral extraction permit.
Second.
It is moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. That concludes our mineral extractions for this evening. We have one more public hearing item on the agenda this evening, and that is a zoning ordinance text amendment request to Section 11-5-2 supplementary regulations to allow for horseshoe looped-shaped driveways within the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Julia, back to you.
Yes, yes. All right. So a little bit of a summary of the amendment request. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider an amendment to Section 1152 of the city code to allow for horseshoe or loop-shaped driveways with no more than two curb cuts within the rural residential zoning district. So staff was approached by a property owner that currently does have a horseshoe-shaped driveway with two curb cuts to the roadway within that RR zoning district. So that amendment request was made by that property owner to the city code. So a little bit of a background. So rural residential zone properties do have more restrictive standards than low-density residential zone properties. These standards include, you know, larger minimum lot size requirements, which is 2.5 acres for platted and then five acres for non-platted, and then also larger setback requirements as well. So there are a number of properties within the rural residential area of the city that do have existing horseshoe, also loop-shaped driveways with the two curb cuts. So, so here's a zoning map of the city. Just kind of wanted to overview where we see that rural residential, rural residential zoning district within the city. It's in that northwestern portion. It's going to be that light yellow, and then also a little bit over, a little more east, but majority, it's in that northwestern portion of the city. So the rural residential district, purpose and intent is to provide a large lot, rural residential lifestyle, which is separate from and not in conflict with commercial agricultural activities. So kind of like what I stated, those larger lots, we're seeing in that rural residential and larger setback requirements as well. But so with the type of properties being larger and the setbacks being more restrictive, there's typically more driveway area established on those type of properties. So a little bit of background as well. Staff did review standards of driveways and as well as conditions associated with those standards in the codes of other communities around the Twin Cities metro area. Staff did find a majority of the cities that were reviewed did not specify on maximum number of curb cuts allowed per property. They more just had the standards that you see normally with driveways, like Max, with driveway can be to the the curb and stuff like that. The cities that were identified to address that were Lakeville, Bloomington, and Edina. They did allow for the one, more than one curb cut. But with those standards, we did see, you know, minimum distance between the two driveways, minimum lot width, and also number of curb cuts, curb cuts allowed on Collector Streets as well. So staff did review those city codes and as well as what was proposed by the applicant. And this is the proposed amendment that staff found would be the best to implement. and this is the proposed amendment that staff found would be the best to implement with that change in the city code. So you can see in front of you, it would have that decondition, a single-family lot of record, in the rural residential zoning district may have a horseshoe or loop-shaped driveway with no more than two curb cuts, subject to the four criteria that's listed So recommendations, so if the planning commission is comfortable with the proposed ordinance language, staff is recommending approval of the amendment with the motion that is listed below that. If not, the commission should provide staff direction, and modifications can be made to the draft ordinance. But with that, I know a representative for the applicant is present as well, could answer some questions the commission has, or I can also answer some questions from the commission.
Sounds good. Thank you, Julia. Are there any comments or questions for Julia at this time? Commissioner Reed?
Just a couple things, I'd be sure I understand. So on the proposed update, and we should, I'm thinking this is probably a good thing, but I want to understand why we have it set up the exact way we do. So point two, it says the property shall have a minimum width of 200 feet. Why is it 200 feet?
So 200 is the minimum for the rural residential district, that width-wise. So like within the city code, it has the standards, the lot standards, that's a minimum requirement. So the 200 feet is that minimum requirement for a lot within that zoning district.
Okay. So in the saying, because this specific section is not in city codes directly under rural residential, but this is tying it back to the rural residential standard?
Correct.
Got it, okay. And then point four, no access shall be allowed to a non-city road where there is at least one other existing access to the property. I'm just not sure I understand that.
More so because the city does not have jurisdiction on state roads or county roads and such like that. So we want it to more specify on city roads where a city does have jurisdiction on.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Julia?
Just one question. Is there a specific distance between the two curb cuts that you're?
We do not have that currently within that standard. I did not see, when I was reviewing other codes as well, as that as a standard. That is something that can be implemented, but currently with what we have presented, that is not at least a condition, but could be looked at.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Tell me if I'm wrong here, but there's a lot of background on like, like potential code violations and stuff like that. But the way I see this and our duty up here is there is an application for zoning text amendment, and all of that stuff about code potential, you know, dispute or whatever, that's kind of just background info, but we're not here to resolve that. We're here to look at a zoning text amendment and that application, and whether this text amendment would be something we approve or not, right?
Correct, yeah. That was more just background information as to why that applicant did come forward to the city normally. We see staff initiating text amendments. We don't normally see property owners coming forward for that, so that was more context to why this came about with this text amendment.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Julia. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak may do so at this time coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
I'll start this evening. My name is Megan Rogers. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Larkin-Hoffman, and our address is 8300 Normandale Boulevard in Bloomington, Minnesota. I'm here on behalf of the Gellers, the applicant in this situation. And as the commission has well noted, you know, this arises out of a code enforcement complaint. We're very thankful for the opportunity to work with city staff to come to a solution here that we believe is consistent with city policy, and then also remedying the site conditions that are existing on the property today. A couple of notes that I would have for you, I very much appreciate staff's thoroughness in reviewing the surrounding city codes and the policy behind those. We submitted that as well as part of our application, saying that both in rural, in cities where rural residential districts are often found, multiple curb cuts are typically permitted. But they're also found certainly within our suburban core cities, so long as there's an opportunity for the city engineer to revert, to review the application, and ensure that there are not traffic impacts that are created with it. And to the commissioner's question about the space between the two entry points, we consider that city engineer process really essential to ensuring that it's safe, that there's, you know, correct sightlines, that the culverts have been maintained, and all of those things. And so I am certainly happy to answer any other questions, and we thank you for your review and for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. As we get ready to move forward with this item tonight, Julia, as you have stated, we are deciding on the zoning text amendment. But for anyone out there that might be watching this, I do just want to say that, you know, I'm happy that it, that it may, that it looks promising, and has city staff support that it's going to work out for this homeowner in this, in this fashion. I think that, you know, our process, our recommended process would be to work with city staff ahead of time and encourage the homeowner to work with them before implementing, because not always does it work out so well. And we would hate for a homeowner to have to undo a costly improvement or a costly change that they've made, as well as it would be frustrating for them. So that old adage of ask for forgiveness rather than permission doesn't apply in certain areas. And I would say that for anyone watching, if you have things you want to do, work with city staff, because maybe there is a solution, but, and in this case, there was, or it appears there will be. But I just want to make sure we don't have other people out there doing things and thinking they can come and get something changed for their, their need. Anyone else have any comments? Yeah, Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I echo that. That's, those are my thoughts as well, so I really appreciate you putting that on the record. Was there, was there actually just for, I didn't quite see, was there actually a citation filed, like a code, code violation? Like, it was official, or was there just a letter being sent out? Or is that the official thing? I don't know.
Yeah, so back in June of '22, our code enforcement officer did go out to the site to talk with the property owners. Letters were sent. That was, the letters being sent is part of the record too, that is within our files. And then also, that was in 2023 when staff was made aware of additional enforcement issues. Another letter was sent, and discussions with the property owner was done as well.
Is that, just in the, from my understanding, for the process of code enforcement here in the city, is that considered a code violation, or does it need to escalate to like a court citation and a filing?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, from a code enforcement perspective, our process, first and foremost, is typically to work with anybody who's found to have any type of infraction or alleged infraction, because our goal at the end of the day is compliance with the city code. Not necessarily any type of punitive penalty or anything like that. The way that Rosemont's code is currently set up is that the process that Julie outlined is more of our standard practice. It's notice of something that's occurring out there, time to remedy the situation, and then working towards a solution. The ultimate stick, if you would look at it, would be prosecution through the court system, which isn't anybody's desired outcome, or some sort of abatement that would be allowed in our city code. So from a city side, there isn't a citation or fine process in place at this point in time. Some cities have that, that's something that we're currently exploring. But so far, and it's a good question, because that's something that we see, it's either work with them towards compliance or go all the way over to the other side through a legal action. Typically, we would prefer to see something that can occur in the middle. Again, the end of the day is compliance. So in this case, before it got to any type of further legal action or legal remedy there, this is the solution that was kind of agreed upon, or at least brought to the planning commission for consideration.
Got it. So, yeah, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thanks for those, thanks for that answer. And again, like I look at this, I'm not, I'm not making a decision on a code violation, right? I'm looking at a zoning text amendment. So really, it's the same as if I didn't know any of that background, and this applicant just came up. That's the way I see it. But I definitely appreciate Madam Chair's comments and echo those. And then I also just want to state, for the applicant, thank you very much for that, the letter application. I just think it's really well detailed, super helpful. I know from, you know, from my perspective, I think that's something that's helpful for an application, and then staff looks at it, makes adjustments as needed. And so that really stood out to me as something that's, that's a good practice. And so thanks to Ms. Rogers and the Larkin-Hoffman firm for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitman. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will make a motion to recommend city council approve the text amendment to the zoning ordinance modifying Section 11-5-2 supplementary regulations to allow for horseshoe or looped driveways with no more than two curb cuts within the RR rural residential zoning district.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section of tonight's meeting. New business? Do we have any new business?
We do not, Madam Chair.
For discussion items, I will just quickly start out by reminding everyone that our next meetings, we have January 23rd, which is the regular fourth Tuesday of the month. And then we have February 26th, which is a Monday. So just a reminder that that meeting has had to have a date change. And then March 18th, which is also a different date than normal. It's a week earlier due to the school district's spring break. If you have any conflicts, please let Alicia and city staff know right away so that they are aware of that. I believe we are not filling Commissioner Powell's seat until the springtime with normal appointments.
Correct, Madam Chair. I was just going to also, yeah, use that as a plug, that with the other appointments coming up in the early, early spring is when that's advertised. I believe it's in February, March timeframe. Anybody who may be interested in serving on the planning commission, there will certainly be an opening for that, as well as for any of our members who are up for a potential reappointment to the planning commission.
Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion items? Okay. With that, I will adjourn our last meeting of the year. Happy holidays, everyone. Meeting adjourned.